We have nine members here. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. The special meeting of the Board of Education, I'll call it to order at 7:01 PM. At this time, since our secretary is absent, I'll take the attendance. Joe, here. John? John? John Bonnino?
We lost John.
Yeah, I think we lost him.
We're down to eight.
Okay.
You're present.
Oh, John is here. Okay. Obviously, I'm here. Angela, I see you somewhere.
I didn't see Angela.
I thought she was here.
I do not see Angela.
No, she's not here. Okay. Um, Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
Um, Jane, Lisa's not here. Jane? Okay, um, we will now move on to the first item on the agenda, which is Policy 8100, Face Masks/Coverings. I will turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools.
Great. Well, good evening, and I know that this is certainly a topic that has been on many people's minds. I appreciate the emails, people sharing some of their thoughts, some of their concerns, as well as some of their supports. And so tonight's really about the fact that today, February 15th, was the original date in which the governor's executive orders were set to expire. These were the emergency powers that were granted to him, which did include masking within the schools. This topic was then taken up by the legislator, and they passed, as well as going through the Senate, in which the masking covers can remain in place through June 30th of this year. With that said, they have given that permission over to the Commissioner of Education and Department of Health. They are not allowed to release that control to local municipalities and school districts until February 28th. By all indications and all signals, they will turn over the decision on whether or not masks will be required within the schools for the February 28th date, meaning the first day that masks would be able to be optional within various schools around Connecticut would be on March 1st. So with all of that information and the ever-changing landscape that we see before us, tonight I am asking the Board to consider the reading of the policy to replace our current 8100 policy regarding face covering in masks. We initially adopted this policy at the start of the 2020-2021 school year. The new policy that I am seeking to replace.
Excuse me, Megan, could I interrupt for a second? I, I think before, because we have members of the public here who may or may not, may or may not be familiar, and maybe some board members may or may not be familiar with our existing policy. You make, can you give us that in like two sentences?
In two sentences, sure. Our current policy says that we follow the, adapt, the, achieve, adapt regulations that were set forth by the Connecticut State Department of Education, as well as following CDC guidance and requiring masks within our schools due to the pandemic. So it really doesn't give a lot of parameters other than the requirement to mask within our schools.
Okay, thank you.
So this new policy that would replace the old policy, it would allow the Board to authorize the superintendent to determine the requirement of face masks within the school. In granting this authority, it would allow me to be nimble in my decisions and to test out the recommend but not requiring masking beginning on March 1st. I want to make certain that we are able to look at the mask option and make certain that we are looking at all of our decisions cautiously. I think it is irresponsible if we make one decision and we hold it rather than seeing the changing landscape for what it is. I want to make certain that we have a safety net in place to return to masks should infection rates peak, but I also want to introduce an opportunity to start allowing for a recommendation but not a requirement, allowing some option. As we now have the ability to have vaccinations for those who choose to do so, we are seeing infection rates decline. We know that everything that we have done within our schools, we have done cautiously controlling variables as they are, and I am looking to make certain that we continue to control these variables, and we continue to watch for as we introduce this new variable. If at any point we deem it unsafe, we have the ability to then require masking within our schools. I want to make certain that I introduce the Board this evening to our trusted advisors who have guided us throughout this entire pandemic. With us today, we have Donna Colbert, who is the Director of Health for Newtown Health Department, as well as Dr. Christy Beck. Christy, who I always have to share with everyone, is also an alumni. I share that because we are so proud of what you've done, as well as how you continue to support the students at Chappau. These women have met with me weekly during this entire pandemic. They have watched the hospitals, hospitalization rates, they have watched infection rates, they have talked about the level of demand in our pediatrics. We have also looked at what our current health rates, we have looked at vaccination rates, we have talked about vaccination opportunities. We have talked about when we are doing social distancing, we have talked about all of the different changes to our mitigation strategies. And as we continue to explore this opportunity, it is with their guidance and support that we go into having a policy that would allow the Superintendent of Schools to make this decision for our school system. So with that said, we continue to make what we know to be real-time decisions. I do not want to go into tomorrow with yesterday's logic. And I think as we continue to lean into our medical experts, I want to make certain that when we are making these changes, we do so with the ability to revert back in the event we have made the wrong choice. So with that said, Greg, with your permission, I would like Dr. Beck to just say hello and introduce herself, as well as Donna Colbert. We are waiting for Lisa Morrissey, who is the Director of New Milford Health Department, and who has now expanded her role, so she is now for Husatonic Valley. I know that she is currently, I believe, at the New Milford Board of Education. We know Donna has to then sneak off to the Newtown Board of Education, so I can tell you, we are not alone as we are making the decision this evening. So with that said, Dr. Beck?
Thank you for that introduction, Megan. And I would like to start by saying that Superintendent Bennett and the Board of Education, you guys have done a fabulous job over the last two years keeping the students in the district safe. And I understand all the decisions you've had to make and changes over the last two years. With that being said, I agree completely with Superintendent Bennett that I would like her to have the ability to be able to make this mask decision. Because I do think things change quickly. Donna could speak more to exactly what positivity rates are right now, but they're obviously going down right now. But one month ago, they were really high, and if one month in the future, all of a sudden they're high again, I would like us to be able to have the opportunity to put masks back on if you choose to make it a recommendation instead of a requirement right now. And then I would just like to keep in mind, Region 12 has done a great job doing layers of mitigation strategies. The vaccine being available to everybody five years and up is super important, and it has been available since November for five and up. So I think parents have had the opportunity, and staff members obviously have had the opportunity to get vaccinated. Region 12 is, has a large footprint, so you've been able to space students out very nicely, which I think is important. And hopefully we'll have upcoming good weather, which also means we can have more time outdoor and open windows for great ventilation. That being said, I would love you to stress if you remove the mandate that the masks really are recommended. They definitely do make a difference. And remember, we're talking about all the kids in the school system, and some are going to have home situations where it is more important that they are particularly safe. All right, I think that's my introduction, but I'm here for questions that you may have as well.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beck. And Donna?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry, my cameras doesn't look very good. I look like I'm in a ghost movie, and I don't want to scare y'all with that image. But I want to thank you for having me be here tonight. You know, it's really to support all of you and, you know, work with you. The Board of Ed, the families, the students, the staff. You know, and I've worked, like Superintendent Bennett said, regularly, I mean, we meet weekly, but we talk and text much more often than that at times. So there's like a, like a lightning line of communication that is taking place, you know, periodically. I think we're in a pretty good place right now. I'm actually, believe it or not, feeling excited about where we're headed. But we may not be there yet, but we can, we are definitely headed in the right direction, and I'm very optimistic that that's going to continue. We have seen cases, case numbers drop pretty dramatically. And, you know, I do a lot of case interviews, and I think in general, and I certainly won't, you know, say it's for everybody, but I think people are doing very well. So, you know, it feels good to hear that when I speak with people. So yeah, I really want to be supportive of the proposal here this evening, because I do think that we need to, you know, we want to balance the needs and of the school community and the families and the school system, but also be able and be prepared to change if necessary. So, um, I know, I don't want anyone to think that we're moving away from the idea that masks are an effective tool along with our other mitigation strategies. But, you know, I, and I do understand that sometimes it's a little uncomfortable when we're facing change, but I do think that we're headed in a good direction, and so this is going to be some of the discomfort that comes with change, and I think it's really good. I think it's really exciting. And I, but I also want to say, knowing that there's different needs for different families and situations in the community, it's going to be really important that we create, maintain a culture that's, you know, cooperative and supportive of all of our students and our families. There's people who have different circumstances, there's people who have different feelings about where we're at right now and the direction that we're headed in. And I can't really stress enough how important it is that we be mindful of each other, you know, be aware of, of course, of our own situations, but be, always remember that people are often facing things that we're not aware of. And so, um, yeah, like I said, I think, uh, I think we're headed in a really great direction.
Okay.
So Greg, at this time, if there's any board members who'd like to ask questions of Donna or Christy, we have them here. These are the people who continue to guide us and will continue to lean into, so I didn't know if there's anyone would like to have a conversation with them or ask any questions as we're going forward with the consideration.
All right, we will want to do that if anyone has any questions. John has his hand up, so.
Now, I'm, I'm wondering, are we going to have two different votes this evening? One on the policy and one on giving the superintendent the authority to, to impose or issue her mandates?
No, John, there's only one vote. The policy itself allows her to do that, so if we vote in the policy, that's all we need to do. We don't need to separate all of them.
All right, so good. I'm glad that you clarified that. And which version is it? Is it the one that's marked draft?
Correct. The one that we are looking to consider is the one that is marked draft. The other one is the current policy.
So there's language in this that is questionable.
John, excuse me, John, before you get to that, I'd really like to keep the questions of, of Dr. Beck and Ms. Colbert, if we could, because they may have to leave, and so I'd like to really focus on that. So if you have questions for them, please ask them.
Okay, so this is, this is my question, and it has to do with the policy. An appropriate face covering shall consist of a cloth mask or disposable procedure-style mask that completely covers an individual nose and mouth. So we all know that there are many versions of masks, and of late, many studies have been done concerning each version of the mask that you wear. A lot of them, study after study on the internet, wherever you go, in the newspaper, on the radio, certain masks simply are ineffective and about transmission and contraction of COVID. Because the, what do they call it? The holes, basically the holes in the mask, which are measured in micrometers or nanometers, are so big in the mask that the COVID particles travel right through. Like it's, someone equated it to a chain-linked fence trying to keep a mosquito out. So I want to know, are we going to have masks that, number one, fit everyone, including the children, and number two, that are effective? Some people say the N95 and the KN95 are the most effective, but the paper masks and the cloth masks, you might as well not wear them because they're not, they're not, they're not proved to be effective in stopping the transmission of COVID.
John, are you, are you asking, are you asking our medical experts to opine as to the effectiveness of various masks, or are you asking the superintendent whether we're going to have masks that are effective?
If we're going to approve-
Right, right now, our policy is that you have to wear a mask. That's our policy right now. So the question is, if masks are going to be let off, if we're going to, if we're going to allow that to be optional and recommended but not, but not required, then that's the superintendent's call under the new policy, but you're going into the issue, you're going into the issue of which mask, and you're going into the issue of whether that policy is adequate. And I really, I really want questions for the doctors, because-
What? Okay, what's the, what's, how do they feel about any mask at all? Is it effective? Is it, you know, is it worthwhile? Or, you know, if, if it's not going to be, then we got to mandate-
John, forget, forget about if it's not, you asked a question, let's get the answer to that. Rather than asking multi-part questions, I might add, this is not the United States Senate. So we really would, I would prefer if we ask questions one at a time, and I'll let you continue asking until you're done. Dr. Beck, do you have, do you have an answer to that question, and then I'll ask Ms. Colbert?
Sure. So I, I do think masks are effective. Different masks are more effective. So the N95 is definitely going to be the most effective. It can filter out the smallest particles. The N95, to be properly used, is actually fit-tested. So you put it on, it's a tight seal, they put you in a special little thing, and they spray something, and you see if it goes through. So that would be the ideal situation, really would protect you against all the smallest particles of COVID. Obviously, that is not a realistic thing that we can expect everybody to be walking around with N95s. So then we, it's a risk-benefit relationship at that point. So KN95s work pretty good. The three-layer surgical mask is going to be kind of next. Face coverings that are made out of fabric, much less so. Um, there's two parts of the COVID transmission. Part of it is respules that come out that are water-based droplets. And so you can imagine any kind of protection, if someone's right in your face and they are sort of spitting, sneezing right on you, any kind of fabric is going to stop the biggest particles. But you can still get aerosolized little parts that go through a mask, hopefully not an N95 that is fit-tested. But if you picture that blue surgical mask, that's going to have like openings over here on the side. So each mask is going to be a little bit different, but they're still going to offer you some protection better than if there was no mask on. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
It does, but I'm, I'm still wondering why we would approve a policy on a mask that doesn't work. And, um, so, and, and secondly, does this policy in any way, shape, or form going to be construed to translate into vaccines at any point?
John, I don't see the word vaccine used in the policy in terms of any kind of directive related to vaccines. So the answer to your question is no. If and when there's a decision on, if and when vaccines come up, it'll, it'll be discussed, but that's not in this policy. Okay, I want to know if Ms. Colbert wants to add anything to that.
Sure, just one thought. You know, Dr. Beck was, like, you know, completely, and, you know, what I understand as far as, you know, the degree of effectiveness of masks goes from an N95 to a KN95 to what we think of as the surgical or the masks that you are probably one of the most common masks that you see, and then down to cloth. So it goes from the most effective and it works its way down. What I've kind of learned over time is the best mask is the one, is the best one that you're willing to wear. If you're willing to wear it and cover your nose and mouth, that's going to be the best mask. And ideally, you would work your way up to that level of effectiveness and what you can tolerate and what you're willing to do. So, you know, masks work when people wear them and they wear them properly. And, um, and I think that's kind of the struggle and the challenge and, and also the success we've had with them.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary, you have a question?
Yes. I would like to ask both, both Dr. Beck and Ms. Colbert. What's being proposed is that after the 29th, we leave this decision to mask or not up to the parents. But I have a problem with that, because if it only affected their child, if they took off a mask, I would have no problem with it. If it would be their child that would get sick, if, if, if they took off a mask, I'd have no problem with it. But we have teachers and staff and other children, and the most vulnerable of, of the, the children are housed at, at Washington Primary. We have a percentage of vaccinated children under 11, from the five to 11-year-olds, that's under 39%. And that, that, and that, and Washington is, and that's in Washington, and Washington is the most vaccinated of all the three towns. So if it was you, would you say we're going to let the parents decide whether we should have masks or not? Or what I would like to see is that we wait another 60 days and then revisit it again so that we can open the windows, the kids can be outside. I would like to know what you, what you think about that.
If you can answer that question.
I was hoping Donna would go first this time.
Okay, you want me to jump in?
Well, I'm just going to say, you, you, if, if it's a question that, that, from the perspective, that your perspective, your medical perspective, your judgment, your professionalism, if it's from that perspective and you can't answer it, because it's not really a question that is answerable, I don't want you to just make some, you know, I don't want you to just try to shoot something. You have no obligation to answer a question unless, unless there's a way to answer it using your, because we're, we're here to get your best professional judgment, so.
Yeah, I, I do think it's difficult, because I do think that is more of a political question. I would throw out there that the American Academy of Pediatrics still recommends masking in schools 100% at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Jen, did you have a question?
Well, I, I did. I just, I just wanted to reiterate a question, the question earlier, just so that I'm clear on what the actual answer was when John was talking masks. So we're clear that the N95 is the most effective mask. However, any protection is better than none at all. So even though we have six-year-olds in school that are vaccinated and up or not, that the, the, the answer really is not how we feel personally about masks, but that in fact, whatever mask you wear is better than not wearing one at all. Am I right in saying that, Dr. Beck? Great, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions from board members? And Jane, if you have a question, just, just jump right in.
Do we have any numbers on our teachers in the region that have gotten COVID, and if they got it from students?
We don't have a transmission within schools, so what happens is, is when we have contact, we trace our contacts. And what we do is we watch to see those who are considered primary contacts, if they end up developing COVID. We have not seen that kind of spread within our schools, so we, we don't have where I can say that I can identify a known spread. That said, we have seen things within our sports teams where we've seen some infections that, that have happened and spread through, and we've seen groups of friends who tend to hang out outside or some social gatherings that we have seen COVID through that, but we have not had a, a spread within the schools that we could directly identify, no.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's for that reason that, that, that there was a particular concern about making this type of a decision. If, if whatever protocols we've used have anything to do with the lack of spread in the schools, I think there's some concern about, about removing the, the school as the place where it's less likely to have spread. So that, that I think is the, is the thing that's weighing on the minds of many of the board members, you know, tonight. In any event, okay. Are there any other questions? Joe? Joe, you're- I'm, I just had to unmute. So for Dr. Beck and Ms. Colbert, I know the guidelines have changed numerous times about distancing. We've gone from six foot to three foot. Say in a scenario where we are in the situation where there is the recommended mask-wearing, and say you have a student that's three foot away from another student that has a mask on, an N95 mask, and that student that's three feet away doesn't have a mask, do you think that there's more of a likelihood that there will be a transmission, or do they have to be right in front of them and dispersing any kind of droplets?
So again, it goes back to degrees of things happening. So we know two unvaccinated, unmasked individuals within three feet is going to be your highest likelihood. You put a mask on one of them, or you separate them, or you vaccinate them, all of those are things that lessen the risk.
So do you feel that distancing and a mask, at least on one person, is effective?
Again, um, better than if they were close together and both unmasked. It's, you know, it, it's not a yes or no. It goes in stages.
Okay, thank you. Mary, you have a question. Or Mary, is your hand still up from the earlier question?
I have to figure out how.
Oh, you just go back to where it was and click on it again. Under Reactions. There you go. Thank you. This is only what, 1,200 Zoom meetings we've had? So we're all, we're all getting used to it still. I, I still can't find things, so don't feel bad. Okay. I don't hear any more questions for our medical professionals. I want to thank both of them for being here tonight. Dr. Beck and Ms. Colbert, thank you very much for answering, answering these questions and helping us through this process. I think one of the principal reasons we have had such a good record at the school has been because of our ability to do contact tracing and to do many of the other protocols we've done, which we have observed quite religiously. So I think that's, I think that's been a big help. This is, there's nothing easy about this. Um, and the other and then the, of course, the other question is, is it is it true that is it true that pandemics generally last three years? I think every pandemic I've seen analyzed, they say it's going to last at least three years, sometimes a little bit more, uh rarely much less. So I I I don't know if we are in for uh the end of this in sight since we are in the third year. But um, anyway, that's not a question, it's an observation. Uh, okay, um, well, Megan, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to put the policy up on the screen and go through it in detail or has everyone had a chance to fully read it and is is conversant with what's in it?
Listening for any feedback from the board because I'm open to both. Quite frankly, the policy is where it allows um.
Well, may maybe we should put it on the screen, we should put it, go through it just. It it's such an important policy, it's such an important thing. I'd like to make sure we understand fully what's in it. I know John had some issues with with the approach toward masking, but I think we've kind of exhausted that topic. Um, but why don't you go ahead and put it up and we'll we'll go through it not terribly slowly.
Megan, I'm gonna have to leave you.
Okay.
Okay, Donna, thank you and and good luck. All right, thank you.
Very much.
I'm going to step out as well. Thank you all um for inviting me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great time, Dr. Beck.
Okay, uh, the 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 beginning of the policy does recognize our concern. Um, and it recognizes the various departments that uh from whom we receive guidelines. So I don't think there's anything too terribly exciting or controversial there.
So I think the part where we look at, and I'm just gonna highlight just so this way draws attention, it is the fact that the superintendent may require all individuals in the school buildings of to have the appropriate face coverings. That really is the um authority that I'm looking to have. So that way, again, my thought in this is that we've always gone cautiously into this. It is one that as we introduce a new variable and an opportunity, it also allows us where if we see any change in the health conditions, we have the ability to then require. Um, but I don't want to mislead anybody as we're reviewing this and recognizing the may require versus my intention.
Megan, can I ask a question? Uh, the term disposable procedure style mask, that includes N ninety-fives, KN ninety-fives, whatever that other one, that Korean one that ends in ninety-four is, uh, and uh also surgical masks.
It covers all types of masks. So if you notice, the ones that we are not allowing are the bandana and the valve masks.
Right.
The ones that that are not. So currently, our current practice is reflected in this policy. So being general enough to include all without being specific, as we know that new face coverings hit the market regularly.
Okay, and then the next provision just allows you, when anyone is entering a building, it allows you to require them to comply with the man with whatever we've been, we whatever procedure we have.
Correct.
Whatever requirement you have, um. Okay, and then uh. And then and then the last sentence of that first paragraph talks about posting notices.
Correct.
All right, so is there any, are there any questions from the board on that first paragraph? Okay, the second paragraph, it it indicates that it's mandatory for all individuals while in a while in a district facility, school vehicle, district transportation, unless an applicable exception applies. And then it talks about um.
That we can deny.
You can be, yeah, you'll be denied admission or or required to leave the premises unless an exception applies. And it can lead to disciplinary action for students and staff, exclusion from school property for members of the community uh in accordance with applicable laws, rules, regulations and or board policies. So the the this is where uh i- if if you don't comply, then you can be excluded. Um, any questions by the board about that provision? Seems fairly straightforward. The the third, the last paragraph is the district authorizes the superintendent. This, John, is where we don't need a second vote uh to or designate, to develop administrative regs and protocols to implement. Um, eh, these protocols outline authorized exceptions um to wearing a face covering uh and then district facilities and transportation vehicles when the so districts are required may identify additional face covering rules as related to safe operation in school community. So that pretty much is what the policy is. A fairly general policy that allows for some flexibility, far more flexibility than the current policy, which allows for no flexibility. So does anyone have any comments, any questions about that last paragraph?
Greg, I do.
Okay, Alex.
Designes, what does that mean?
Um, in the event that I am not capable of making a decision, if I am at all either um unavailable or incapacitated, it would then go down to someone who has been assigned. We do have a plan within the district where if anything happens to the superintendent, it then goes down, who then becomes the, you know, who has the authority to make the decision at any level. Um, you know, if if I myself went down with COVID, then, you know, who then would be uh the decision maker for different uh aspects of running the district, so.
Who would that be now?
Uh, I believe I have Nicole Grant regarding this.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Well, you know that if it if 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 the decision devolves to the level of the board, that the entire school is closed and the decision no longer needs to be made because we definitely are not making this decision. Uh, okay, uh, there you go. Um, that's that's the proposed um policy. Do we have, uh, I'll open, I'll I'll just to put it on the table. I'd like to know if I have a motion to approve it to to approve policy eighty-one hundred in lieu of the existing policy. So this would withdraw the existing policy and and replace it with this one. Moved by Jen, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Alex, now discussion.
Yeah, um, Greg?
Yes, Alex.
This is not a vote on whether we're going to take off masks or not. This is purely a vote on whether Megan can make that decision. Is that correct?
That is.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that uh uh it's understood that it's when we're not voting masks or no masks. We're voting, Megan, as you see it from a day-to-day basis, you decide.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, other comments? John? John, you're on, you have to unmute.
I still would appreciate it if more and be willing to vote for it. If we could determine, again, I research this almost daily and study after study. Um, could confirm that the pores in most masks are at least a thousand times larger in diameter, anywhere from fifty-five nanometers to four hundred and forty nanometers as compared to the diameter of virus particles, which are sixty nanometers to a hundred and forty nanometers. Over a hundred and fifty comparative studies and pieces of evidence on COVID nineteen mask and mask mandates that have been very clear, clear over twenty months now. COVID face masks, blue surgical masks and cloth masks are largely ineffective and even very harmful, including the it causes respiratory infections other than COVID. Michael Osterholm, a University of Minnesota epidemiologist, states that medical masks are designed for adults, not children. Osterholm notes, even masks designed for children slip off their faces. Children take off their masks to eat. Add in Omicron's intense contagiousness and the benefits of mandates are minuscule. The typical mask you buy in a drugstore is not really effective in keeping out virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. It might, however, provide some slight benefit to keep out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you. I do not recommend you wear a mask. Dr. Anthony Fauci wrote in an email on February fifth, twenty twenty. A May twenty twenty meta-study, meta-study on pandemic influenza published by the US CDC found that face masks had no effect either as personal protective equipment nor as source control. A WHO review, World Health, World Health Organization of ten randomized controlled trials of face masks against influenza-like illness published in September, found no statistic.
John, can I just ask a question? I I'm just, I'm getting lost, John, and so I'm just unclear. What is it that you're trying to argue?
I'm arguing.
Masks or not masks? Because we just, we just entertained this earlier, so I'm just not clear where you're going.
I'm arguing that just to say that the superintendent has the authority to issue a mandate that they wear masks. I'm I'm arguing that it should be more specific to what.
He's working with the doctor that was just on and answered all your questions. And personally for me, I'm gonna listen to Dr. Beck and not from a board member about what's best.
Yeah, but.
So for me, I feel like, no, I feel like we're losing sight here, John. This is not your comment for you.
No, we're not.
Session.
Yes, we are, John.
But look, folks, 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 can can one person talk at a time, please? And the person.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
John, John, the person that talks is the one who has the floor. Right now, John has the floor. I would appreciate it if we wouldn't interrupt. Everyone will get their chance. Thank you, John, go ahead.
Epidemiologists after epidemiologists, scientists all state only a very limited number of masks are effective. So why should we continue to mandate mask wearing? Uh, the mandate uh masks that don't do anything, it's senseless.
Okay.
In my mind, stupid.
Okay, Megan?
I think what we've been doing is twenty-two months of action research. And I think when we look at right now, we know what happens when children are masked. We know what happens with the current masks that they have. What we're looking to do is recommend but not require them. So we're going to be watching for any changes because if people have the choice to take off the mask, that's what we're doing. That is the control group that we have is just whether or not that option does anything with our infection rate. And what we're saying is, is if we do see the uptick, then we reserve the right to say we need to mask back up because something has changed. And I think for me, it's not saying what type of masks or or recommending. We see what's happened within our schools to this point while masked. Introducing the recommended but not required, we're going to watch to see what happens within our schools. And if at any point we start to see that trending is bad, I want to make certain we have the ability to go back to what we know today. And so that's what I'm asking for, that's what this is about.
Yeah, um.
I understand that, but to continue to mandate masks that are ineffective is, in my mind, you know, uh, just counterproductive, that's all.
Well, I'll I'll tell you, you know, John, I I look, you 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 can cite studies and I've actually read quite a number of the studies that came out. And those studies concluded that masks are effective, that masks uh, you know, depending on which mask will depend on how much effective. Uh, you know, no, no mask, the only way for a mask to be able to filter out every possible particle is if it blocks your, you you it literally suffocates you, okay? Because it is impenetrable. So we know that they're going to admit things and the N ninety-five mask is effective to remove ninety-five percent of all particles. Uh, the 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 um, the K, the KN ninety-five similar. And then the uh KF, it's KF ninety-four, which is the Korean standard filter filtration system is also effective. And that mask has been found to actually fit children. Uh, that can be fit to children, perhaps easier than the others. Now, I I don't know that necessarily uh that an N ninety-five is likely to be worn by very many children. I'm not sure it fits them very well. But I'll tell you what, the superintendent will ask that masks be worn and hopefully if masks have to be worn, then people and their for their children will find masks that fit and masks that the children will tolerate. Because if the children don't wear a mask at all, I believe that any mask is effective. The last time I had surgery, everybody in the room was wearing a mask, uh, except me, actually. Now, that would change, they probably they'd have me on a mask, uh, but but I will tell you that uh, but that that there must be a reason for it. And surgical masks must be effective at some things, may not be the best for COVID, but they're certainly effective to prevent the spread of a lot of disease or they wouldn't be wearing them in the emergency, in the uh, the surgery, the the surgical theater. So I I I don't want to get into a dispute of whether or not masks are effective, that's irrelevant. The question is whether masks will be worn, whether they were effective or not. The governor required that they be worn for two years. So uh, the the fact of the matter is uh, that decision was made that now the decision as to whether they will be worn or not will be the superintendent's decision in consultation with the medical authorities. And hopefully, it will be, it will be a good decision when it's made and it will be, it will change as necessary with the circumstances and situations. I'm heartened by the fact that infection rates uh in Litchfield County are back down to where they were before these, before Omicron even even was anyone's imagining. Uh, and so I I'm I'm very heightened by those, that situation. But it doesn't mean we're out of the woods. Again, uh, they they do say these pandemics tend to last three years and we're only two and a little bit into it. Uh, two years, two months into it. And so um, I think that, you know, we may have more to come. And I think the advantage of this policy is it gives the superintendent the ability to make the decision and to revoke the decision and make a different decision as things are going on the ground. It doesn't require waiting two weeks to get a board together for a meeting or or do something like that. It allows it to be done immediately and and it it does it in a manner that's respectful and legal and 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 we we are confident will will be as effective as we're gonna get. So I I I personally think it's a good policy. Uh, and um, and I think it's it's certainly a lot better than the existing policy, which is completely inflexible and dated. It's very dated, the existing policy. And I I think we need a new policy and this one seems to make a lot of sense. Yes, uh, Jen?
I just also would like to add that I trust our superintendent to surround herself with people that are um uh going to to guide her and give her the medical uh guidance that she needs to make the decisions. Because I certainly am not uh an expert, I'm not a doctor. So and I don't meet with the team that she does every Friday morning to help uh make the decisions that she's been making for the last two years. So I just trust, I trust our superintendent to make those decisions.
Thank you. Other comments?
I I personally agree with Jen.
Okay, I don't know if you all heard that, Jane said she personally agrees with Jen.
Thank you.
Okay. Well. There is, does anyone else have a comment or want to add to the discussion before we take a vote on approving this policy? I do not see any. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, uh, I just lost that screen.
Go ahead, hand up.
I'm sorry?
Joe has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Megan, did uh, did the doctor uh and Ms. Colbert give you any indication of what what the spike number would be? If we see some sort of a spike?
So we had this discussion because the Department of Health has changed uh the metrics. And so we had a guy, we were talking about whether or not we were going to get that number. That, Joe, what you're asking for was exactly what I had wanted and we were told we are not getting that. Um, they've actually been a um, they have changed the um numbers that they're gonna be doing, which are going to be hospitalization and deaths. Um, because it's no longer gonna be just testing, there's at-home testing and all different types where they're finding that they're not able to track it. In the conversation um that I've had with Dr. Beck, Donna Colbert and Lisa Morrissey, um, we've also looked at visits to local pediatricians, what what's happening? What is the influx, what's happening within children's hospitals? Um, it's also challenging because children's hospital numbers are reported where the child is taken to the hospital, which makes Hartford look like inflated numbers because CCMC is there. So we are um looking at all of the numbers that we have available to us. Right now, they have said that they are very um optimistic on where our numbers are right now. They've seen the decline coming down. Uh, we've talked about our spacing that's available, we have looked at other mitigation strategies, what we were leaning into. And based on everything we have before us, they have said, and you heard Christie say. They have said, and you heard Christie say. They strongly recommend. That masking is there, but it is one in order to move forward. They both agree that recommend but not require. Is the next step in our journey in this. Um, and so for me, again, doing such cautiously, and that is what they also support. We're gonna be watching. We have never stopped contact tracing. That remains a strategy that other districts had stopped, we continue it. So we're gonna be watching for if this now introduces some kind of spread or things that we haven't seen. Within our schools during these twenty-two months and will navigate accordingly and adjust. So, right now they do support. The policy as we've laid it out and to know, but they take comfort in is that if at any time we see. Trends going in the wrong direction that we have the ability to pull it back. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And obviously you'll be looking to see whether there are any other variants that come along if variant pi, for example, which is the next letter in the Greek alphabet. Uh, comes sailing down the track, you may have to reverse field. And that's the idea of the flexibility. Because we saw how quickly Omicron came in. Uh, I mean, we saw it spread throughout South Africa in a matter of days. Uh, and it was only, uh, two weeks later that it was, two and a half weeks later that it was. It was already spread through England and was arrived here on the East Coast. So it's, uh. We'll have to be very careful, you'll have to be very careful.
I, I think we're looking not to have things that are so fixed in concrete and allowing some of that flexibility.
Yeah, I think, I think that's one reason why perhaps, uh, Omicron moved quite so quickly is we really weren't prepared for it. We weren't prepared for anything that moved that, that rapidity. And so I think we have to not make that mistake again. All right, any other questions or comments from the board before we vote on this policy? All right. If that's the case. Then I guess. We will move to a vote. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. There, there's Danielle, okay, go ahead.
Alrighty. Do you wanna read it first, um, Greg, or do you want me to just call the?
Well, the, the, the motion is to approve, um. Policy, the policy eighty-one hundred on face masks and coverings as was presented to the meeting this evening. Um, in place of the existing policy eighty-one hundred.
Very good.
It's moved in second, okay?
Okay, Joe.
Yes.
John.
I reluctantly vote no because I don't see the point in potentially mandating masks that. Don't have any value, that don't, that may not work.
John, it's a yes or a no.
Yeah, John, yes or no. Okay, no, okay.
Okay, Alex.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Jane votes yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Chairman Greg?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so that's eight yeses and one no. None abstained.
And none abstained, and that's the nine people that are here. So that's, uh. That, uh, the policy is adopted. I will now, uh, move to the next item of the agenda, which is public comment. Are there any members of the public? If you, if you wish to comment on matter, on the matters on tonight's agenda. Uh, please use the hand raise feature so I can find you a little faster. Uh, because I've got two pages to scroll between. So, uh, I, whoops, I see one hand went up, Ashley. Or the person identified, whatever you've got name, you've got for yourself, I'm gonna call you that.
That's me, um, this is Ashley Tenhill. I have a child at Chapag and one at Washington Montessori. I'm also a Chapag alum. And I think that this decision is extremely reckless and premature. I agree with Mrs. Weber that there needs to be more time allowed to identify the possible. Issues that could arise with removing masks from school. I think that we are in an opportunity to review and observe other schools. As they adopt this policy change before we. Adopted ourselves. I think that Dr. Beck made an excellent point. That we are in winter, we cannot open doors, we have indoor recess, we have indoor gym. And we're unable to utilize any sort of outdoor learning opportunities at this point. By being able to create outdoor spaces and opportunities that are consistent. And more frequent than indoor opportunities. We will already remove a requirement for masks just by being outside. You'll already reduce the percentage of time that those children are required to have masks just by getting them outdoors. And we are unable to do that in this current temperature. And that's. It's just something we can't avoid. It's an unavoidable mitigation that we, we can't take right now. I think that, you know, we need to be able to trust parents to keep their kids home when they're sick. But we have no in-school testing option. I know that there are regional and there are federal and local opportunities for us to have in-school testing. And if parents are gonna take the responsibility to have their kids attend school and not wear masks. Then they should be able to prove that they are not sick. Kids can transmit COVID two days before they show symptoms. You can keep a kid home then when they show symptoms, but you can't take back those two days that they've been walking around without a mask at school. I mean, I think there are a number of points that can be made as to why this is a bad idea at this time. I don't wanna take up. At more time with facts and points. But I do think that it is premature. If any decision needs to be made about removing masks, it is too soon. And the only reason we are doing it at this time is for political and personal reasons. The American Academy of Pediatrics is a hundred percent mask at school. I have no, no understanding why we're even discussing it at this point, if that's the case. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, can I have eighteen next?
Sorry, excuse me. Ashley, could you just tell me what town you reside in?
Sorry, I'm in Washington.
Thank you.
Hello?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Alan Tenhove. I apologize for the initials. I have inability to change things on my computer for some reason. It's an old Chromebook. Um, but I'm, I'm Ashley's husband. I'm a parent of, uh, current Region twelve students in Washington. And I feel, I agree with her. I feel a mask mandate should be extended beyond. The twenty-eighth, which really only amounts to seven in session school days. Um. Since winter break, we've had almost a hundred and fifty positive cases, even greater number of close contacts. Uh, conversely, the private schools in and around our region that have strict vaccine and testing requirements have had almost no cases the entire year. And none since winter break, none. Uh, and this is an accomplishment. The stats have been absolutely dismal. Um, in the last six weeks, our three towns have added between twenty-six and thirty-five percent of their twenty-two month positives. Um. And yet at the last, you know, board meeting, we had people saying that they can be trusted, um. You know, to know when their kids are sick and to keep them home. Uh, yet the numbers tell a completely different story. Um. If we hadn't had a mask mandate and the ten-day isolation period during those a hundred and fifty cases. How many of those close contacts would have been infected and how many families would have been, you know, affected by that? Um, if the mandate is eliminated, what would be enough to reinstate a mandate and why does it have to get bad in the first place to do so? It sounds like a bad gamble. I don't agree with gambling with children. Uh, you know, the anti, I guess, mask movement has contributed to. Six million deaths now worldwide. I, I don't, I don't see why we're, um, playing with this idea right now. Um. Effectiveness of masks, as we know. It's not a belief or an opinion, it's a well documented scientific fact. Um. I'm gonna, I just wanna backtrack a few months, fourteen months. Um, by the time the governor began stripping safety measures in the fall of twenty twenty. Connecticut had accumulated seventy thousand positives and four thousand deaths. He said, quote, "The reason why we are able to have a discussion about entering into phase three is because of Connecticut residents' collective actions to fight the spread of COVID nineteen." "By taking the sector rules seriously, wearing masks, physical distancing and washing your hands. "I believe that we can continue to keep these rates low while also easing some of the restrictions." That were enacted earlier this year. Since that phase out, Connecticut has added six hundred and fifteen thousand more cases and ten thousand more deaths. Uh, this failure still hasn't stopped policymakers. And talking heads from making similar claims during the Delta surge last summer and fall. Investor Scott Gottlieb, a guy in Lamont has recently given a lot of heat to. Said in September, in a September twen- two thousand twenty-one interview. With CNBC. Where he said, quote, "I am optimistic that we are peaking in COVID for the grim truth that the Delta wave is so pervasive. "And infecting so many people that on the back end of this, we're going to have immunity in at least ninety percent of the population." Now he's making the same claims about Omicron. Um, can I trust what these people say now about Omicron being the endemic form of COVID? I have no reason to. And even if it is endemic, doesn't mean it's a minor threat. Experts without a political agenda say. That in the months and years to come, we run the risk of seasonal surges. So it would be negligent not to be proactive and protect ourselves with some common sense policies. Um. I realize people don't believe in science and, you know, feel politically obligated to obstruct it. But that's not fair to the people who have taken, you know, proven steps again and again. We live in communities, you know, with mutual obligations. Uh, people in our community have pre-existing conditions or are of a certain age that, um, make them more likely to have a bad outcome if they get infected with COVID. We don't get to tell them that the pandemic is over. Uh, we live in a school region that outwardly champions critical thought, science, community, bit by bit through scaling back mitigation efforts and isolation times. Um. And, you know, instead of fortifying them, uh, we're being forced to surrender our safety and freedom to satisfy this misinformed political ideology. Um. Living under a threat of a preventable, you know, evolving virus with many variants because of a. Just because of ignorance as we enter our third year of a pandemic is ridiculous, so, uh. If public education doesn't have a, you know, a sense to require regular testing and vaccines like the private sector. I don't think, you know, basic safety measures, um, that are for protected kids in school should be taken away. Um, declaring an end to the pandemic when thousands of people are dying every day is absurd. A board or a governor doesn't decide that the pandemic is over. Um, neither does cursing at the Board of Ed during a meeting or threatening them with lawsuits, you know. Human behavior dictates the end of this pandemic. Um, an infection rate of one to one dictates the end of a pandemic. We're not even close to that. After two years, I don't see how it would hurt to wear a mask for a few more months and see what happens elsewhere. The only thing that's clear right now is how it could hurt not to keep the masks. On the Region twelve website, it currently says. Our goal is to stay one step ahead of COVID and. I hope that's true. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um. One thing I do wanna make clear though, as we go forward, that no one is, the, the, no one is saying that masks are coming off now. Tomorrow, the end of this month, the superintendent will make a decision as to when the time is appropriate. But we do know one thing, we do know at some point in time, it will be appropriate to remove masks. Uh, and it may not be this month and it may not be next month, but it, it will, that will come at some point. And, and I just want people to realize that this is not, this is not something where everyone can go home tonight and say, oh, I, my kid doesn't need to wear a mask to school tomorrow. They most definitely do. Masks are required and will be required tomorrow if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Bennett. And so there's, this, this is not ending something right now. So I just wanna make that clear in case people were not understanding that. I have a, uh, Rebecca Alfieri, is, is her hand up?
Hi, I am Rebecca Alfieri. I am from Bridgewater, Connecticut. My son goes to Burnham School. Um, and I just want to say simply thank you for considering, you know, hearing our voices for the people on. You know, the side that do want unmasked our children and think, you know, about the future and for our kids. And I just, you know, I, I just really wanna say thank you that you do consider our children, um, the future of them. And their mental, social, emotional, physical, as well as their safety when it comes to having a mask on or off. Um, I just wanna say thank you and I'm very happy with the choices made tonight. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter Marino.
Uh, good evening. Um. I just had a couple of questions that maybe Megan could answer, uh, based upon reading some. Uh, Board of Ed. Uh, memos from other towns. Um, if Megan, you do decide. To make the masks, uh, the mask mandate recommended instead of mandated. Um. Will masks still be required on buses? And will teachers be allowed? To, uh, remove their masks as well. I saw specific language in Brookfield, which was. Um. Quite disturbing, saying that vaccinated teachers could take their masks off, but unvaccinated teachers couldn't. Um. So maybe, and, and, and to the point that, um. Someone else made this evening regarding social distancing. Will there still be social distancing in place and other protocols within the school? If you move to just a recommendation, uh, not a mandate on the masks. Um. And just to, to, to clarify, I wasn't in any way. Um, trying to threaten any board members about lawsuits. I was merely saying that if there was segregation. Or discrimination against either teachers who. Um, were, were vaccinated or unvaccinated, which is private, uh, you know, health information and can't be. And nor can be forced to be disclosed. That that would be a concern of mine for the region is that if there was that sort of thing happening, um. You know, against. Uh, someone who was labeled as an unvaccinated teacher or a student, that the region would, would have to anticipate lawsuits for that. So. Um, but again, back, my original questions were, I appreciate the board allowing Megan this. To, to make this decision. Um, but. If, so you could answer to the mask on buses and, and the masking of teachers as well. Thank you.
What, what town are you from?
I'm sorry, what town are you from?
Apologize, uh, Bridgewater.
Bridgewater.
Greg, I know we don't typically have interaction, um, but I do think if, if you would let me just indulge, cuz the two questions, um.
I would.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, um, so to say to you, the buses and the transportation, that is a. Federal guideline. So yes, we will still need to remain masked on buses. Since that is not, um, something that was under the executive order. So that's beyond us and we will, um. We will continue to require that. Um, as far as vaccinated versus unvaccinated, we are not putting a stipulation. Um, regarding that within this, um, decision. So the recommended right not require. Um, is not one that we have only allowed if you're vac- if you're vaccinated, it is. That it is recommended and not required.
Okay. Other questions? Oh, by the way, when you, when you've asked your question, can you put your hand down? Uh, so that we, uh, it's easier for me to see who has questions. Uh, Rebecca, if you could put your hand down unless you have another question, it would be appreciated. Mike and Kara Abram.
Uh, yes, hi, Mike Abraham, Kara from Roxbury. And, uh, for starters, I would like to thank Superintendent Bennett, the board, the entire staff. Um. Uh, everybody involved over the last. Two, two and a half years. Um, during this entire period, I've always had a sense, we've had a sense. That, um, all of the decisions have been made, uh, for what's in the best interest and. What's in the interest of safety. Um, and, you know, we've been supportive of that. Uh, right now, it's. Uh, we're at a, a bit of a juncture. And, um, even though I share some of the same hesitations that others have voiced. Uh, I do also think that, you know, there's more than just a polit- it's. Been a political, political consideration. kind of political, political considerations in moving forward with the ability to allow some unmasking. I think that there's a social element for our kids as well. In other words, yes, we know that this is not over. We can't declare this over. We don't know what's around the corner. But at the same time, it can go on and on. And if this, if we are in a lull right now or a period of decline, you know, where some statistics go seventy something percent drop over the last weeks. Personally, I have confidence that we can make those decisions if we, if the superintendent retains a level of flexibility, that we can adapt and we could move forward and you know, and weather this. So it's with that, it's a balancing act. And I don't know that there's ever going to be a period, a time when we have that certainty that we know for sure that we're through it. So with that, I'm confident in the vote that was taken.
Okay, thank you very much. Laura Ternicio.
Hi there, Laura Ternicio from Roxbury, and I'd like to comment on, I think, the approach that Superintendent Bennett and the board are taking is actually very responsible and reasonable. And at some point, we need to make progress, right? So I for one, I'm just really looking forward to the how much more robust and healthy these children will become with the heightened social interaction that they're going to have simply by seeing each other's faces and the improvement on the quality of learning and teaching that will happen, again, certainly by having that interaction, that face-to-face interaction with instructors. I think it's a really healthy support that all of these students deserve and are ready to have. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Anne Marie Sorbello.
Good evening. I just want to first also say thank you to the superintendent, to the board, and to all of our staff. This has really been an unprecedented time in education, and I don't think there's really been easy answers along the way. As Megan knows, my family has been very conservative throughout the pandemic due to our own personal medical reasons for that. I am hoping that when we are getting closer to the twenty eighth, that you may consider keeping the masks on a little bit longer, as Mary had said. And the reason being is if you look at our school calendar, we are coming up on a vacation weekend. And I know that my family will be traveling for college tours. Now, we will be wearing masks, but I know that the majority of people I know at this point, you know, are not necessarily wearing masks when they don't have to. So we know from past vacations that our numbers tend to spike. So why wouldn't we give it a little bit more time to make sure that we're not going to have that spike? Get it to be a little bit warmer weather so that we have the opportunity to be opening up windows, to be giving kids the opportunity to eat outside if they want to. I know that my son will continue to wear his mask, but the majority of his friends do not intend on wearing their masks if it becomes something that is recommended and not required. So again, thank you. I know that this is not easy. But I would ask you to please consider with the vacation, giving it a little bit longer, and also that'll give us a chance to see what's happening in other districts that are now making it recommended. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What town are you from, Anne Marie? Sorry.
Oh, sorry, New Milford, Connecticut. We are Tuishuan.
Okay. Are there other people, other members of the public who wish to comment? If so, please raise your hand. If you are unable to raise your hand because of whatever device you're using to come on here, then feel free to send a message. Joan Hammond.
Hi, I'm Joan Hammond from Washington. I'm a grandparent. I have two children at Washington Primary, one in Reach and one in kindergarten. My observation is that the kids don't mind wearing masks at all. My grandchildren, when I get them off the bus, don't immediately take them off. They don't come off until we get back in the house, and sometimes not even then. I think it's premature asking and giving parents and students the decision to either mask or unmask. I think that kids, particularly young children, if they see all the masks coming off, they'll want to take theirs off. And I believe that masks work. I think that's why we've had fewer colds. I know in my family, usually when you have a preschool student, they get sick that first year. And my granddaughter hasn't gotten sick, and I attribute a lot of that to mask wearing. So I agree with Mary and a couple of the others who have spoken that I think it's a good idea to wait a little longer before we unmask. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? Any member of the public? Yes, Kate Kubasek.
Hi, it's Kate Kubasek. I spoke on the last meeting, too. I'm from Bridgewater. I have three kids at Burnham. I am pleased with this direction moving forward that, you know, we may have the opportunity to have our kids unmasked. And I just want to thank everyone for doing that. And I also just want to go ahead and reiterate the fact that I think it should be parental choice within, you know, in combination with their children. And I think that's really important. And as I'm hearing the different conversations going on, and I know everyone has an opinion, and obviously mine is my opinion as well. But I think it's, I too have, you know, a kindergartner who's never gone to school really without a mask. And I think that there's something that there, there are so many things they're losing by having that be part of their everyday. And I really, I really do look forward to and hope that people embrace the fact that they could have that freedom at school to see their peers and to see their teachers in their faces in the way that they can learn both academically by watching their mouths move and their speech, and also socially with the, you know, smiles from their peers and the joy that they can see on a more regular basis in school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the public who wish to make a comment? Okay, Nikki?
Hi, my name is Nikki Orletsky. I've spoken up before. I'm from Bridgewater. I just want to, just, I come on and agree with Katie. I completely agree with what she's saying about the social emotional. We have several, all of our children haven't known a normal year. For, you know, the past two years, my daughter, youngest, who's in sixth grade, hasn't known a normal school year since she was in third grade. I'm also a first grade teacher, and I see the effects that it's having on our primary students with, I teach phonics and getting them to understand and with their early reading. These masks are really showing a huge gap in learning. I don't know, I'm a little shaky with my voice because I'm a little passionate about this because I see it every day. I'm in the classroom. I'm not on the outside. I see it firsthand. And I, I, you know, I, I know there's so many opinion on, opinions on both sides, and I hear everyone. I hear, I hear your, your passion behind your voices, but when you're speaking to somebody that sees it firsthand, I have seventeen little ones staring at me with these masks on and trying to get them to learn and trying to get them to social, socialize and, and, and read and get to where they need to be. And there is a physical barrier between my connection with them and their learning, and it is really, really, really disconcerting. And I, I just plead, you know, with my own students, I don't teach in Region Twelve, but I do teach somewhere very close. And I, my student, my children that are in Region Twelve is, you know, who I'm, I need to speak for on this meeting is, you know, their socialness that just, I'm sorry, I just, I'm just kind of at awe that we are not, I, I don't know, I guess I'm kind of stumbling over my words. I apologize, but I, I really like the forwardness that we're, we're going on, and I just want to say that I'm, I'm looking forward to a day where our students can see each other smile and, and smile at their teachers. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else? Any other member of the public wish to make a comment? Going once? Going twice? Three times? All right. Hearing no further or seeing no further raised hands and having scanned both screens. We'll move on to the next item on these, on the session, which is an executive session to discuss a legal matter. And following that as adjournment, do I have a motion to go into executive session? To discuss a legal matter? Moved by Jen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alex seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Jane, your vote? Okay, Jane votes aye. Anyone voting against? All those voting against say nay. All those abstaining say abstain. All right, it's unanimous. We will go into executive session. I want to thank the members of the public who came tonight and commented, and those who just came and attended. We appreciate your input. We've listened to it, and we, I will tell you that I read all of the items that were sent in that were shared with us on, on the email. So I very much appreciate your, 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 your comments and your your, your interest in, in the Region Twelve school system. Okay, we are, we will go into executive session.